All right, so good morning, everyone. Welcome to our weekly Commissioner's Status Update. We have a full schedule this morning. We're probably going to have to shuffle some things around to accommodate our agenda. In any case, it is March 2nd, 2020. The time is 11:00 a.m. Calling this meeting officially to order, attending are Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, what I'm going to recommend, but I'd like to ask Clerk Brandon first if it's okay with him. I'd like to move the ballot language for the U R D to item number one. Clerk Brandon, is that okay with you?
Certainly, Chairman Filios.
Okay, all right. All right then, so that's what we're going to do. We're going to move item three, which is the ballot language, so we can accommodate everybody. This way, if you have to leave, you can leave. But the meeting is one hour. It will be limited to one hour because there's a little bit of a concern over at the Cootenay Health regarding the spreading of the coronavirus. And so I think we're going to want to attend to that and see what's going on simply because we do not have, and I'll say it again, we do not have any confirmed cases in Idaho yet. But it is something that we're concerned about, certainly Panhandle Health is watching it very carefully. Okay, so let's move right on here. So the purpose of this meeting this morning and this particular agenda item is to address the ballot language, okay? Not the question of whether or not we like U R Ds and what we can do to change them or fix them. That really doesn't lie within the purview of the Board of County Commissioners. The only thing and the only area where we have any authority is to place something on the ballot before the voters of Cootenay County as an advisory vote, non-binding only. Insofar as the structure of the U R Ds is concerned, how they operate, the expiration periods, that all lies within the state legislature. We, as a body of three, have no influence there, other than as much as you do, that we can come forward and testify as individuals. Okay, so basically, we're not going to go into the question of legitimacy. What I am going to do, though, is normally we reserve public comment to the end. What I'm going to do is let you get up and speak, if you wish. State your name, state your address. We're going to limit the comments to two minutes, so we can accommodate everybody, if in fact, everybody chooses to speak, wherever you stand on the issue. Okay, so once again, it'll be one hour max. What I do want to point out is that, and I think Treasurer Matheson wanted to know what the results of the poll was, we had about 1,600, and I guess Nancy can comment, Nancy Jones, on this further, screened views, but the actual vote, I think, were about 400, 400 people that actually voted. Eighty, I want to say 87% in favor of the advisory vote, and 13% opposed to the vote. So I'm stating it in those terms, but however it was phrased, that's how it came out. There were people who commented, and Nancy can address that later toward the end of the meeting. I'll get with you in a minute.
To clarify, it was 86% against, 86% against, not having to vote, but the language itself was 86%.
Not in favor of the U R D.
Not in favor of the U R D.
Just slightly different.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Fair enough, thank you. And so anyway, so just wanted to point that out. There were a number of comments that were made. If we have time toward perhaps the end of the meeting, maybe Nancy Jones can come in, because she entertained some of those comments. Unfortunately, there is a lot of misunderstanding. This is a complex issue. U R Ds are not simple. It is a complex issue. There are people who are just simply opposed to them, but from the nature of the comments, what is clear is that a lot of us simply don't understand. And that's not unusual, that's not to be derisive. It is a complex issue, and there are just probably a handful of people, usually in the cities, that understand these better than most of us. Okay, so what I want to do before I open it up, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up for you folks to comment, and you can comment about the U R Ds. I would appreciate it if you would keep your comments somewhat relevant to the U R Ds. It will be strictly timed to two minutes, so that we can get through this. But what I want to point out, because of some of the misunderstanding, and I had to spend some time educating myself over the weekend, because I'm not so sure I fully understand the complexity of the U R Ds. But I have a question for Treasurer Matheson. When an individual, when a U R D is formed, okay, what portion, and I'm going to address this question to the unincorporated area of the county, not the cities, but those of us who live in the county, what components of their total tax bill are, that actually affects the U R D? You have the top line, which is the county taxes, right? That's one. There are others. Do you know what those are? Okay, let me try and elaborate. People are under the impression that your total tax bill somehow comes into question when you're paying a U R D, or you're paying the increment that constitutes the U R D. There are essentially four areas from your tax bill, if you live in the unincorporated area, that come into play when the amount that you contribute to the U R D. First is your county tax. When you look at your county tax bill, from this, from the treasurer, you'll see your first-line item, county taxes. That's typically 25% of the tax bill. The other three areas that lend themselves to being, to having an impact on what you contribute to the U R D is EMS, emergency medical services, your relevant highway district, it could be Lakes, it could be Eastside, and N I C. And all those are taken into account, and then a formula is applied that determines what you contribute to the U R D. Now, I'm going to put that aside. I'm going to come back to it later, okay? Because I'm going to try to address some of the misunderstanding. But again, and I think I'm going to ask Jeff Tyler to comment on this at some point. You have a meeting. Is it Thursday night, Jeff?
Thursday night at six.
Okay, all right. So let's proceed with public comment. Jeff, I'm going to ask you to go first. Did you want to speak?
Sure, I wanted to say something. Thank you, guys, for the advisory vote. We really appreciate that. And we do. And on the language, you know, there's some controversy on how the language is going to be. Is it going to be for future elections or future things? I know that you guys are against talking about the hospital district, which is fine. Before us, we do have the Post Falls U R D coming up, and I think there's one in Rathdrom and one in Hayden. And so we do have those that are before us that we could address in the advisory vote. The advisory vote could be something simple, though, mentioning that, being that, you know, county citizens are paying about three and a half million a year going to city U R Ds, how do you feel about U R Ds? Are you in favor or against? Could be something as simple as that, but it would be nice if you could let the people know the burden that the U R Ds have on the county.
Okay, as long as I'm going to let you go a little further, Jeff. Do you want us to speak about your meeting Thursday night?
Sure. For those that don't know, at the library, we're going to have, it's basically an informational meeting, and we're going to have, Steve is going to do an opening statement on how he understands the numbers and stuff about the U R Ds. And then we're going to have a panel that's going to consist of Dan Gookin, Coeur d'Alene Councilman, also Matt Roder, Hayden Councilman, and Joe Malloy, Post Falls Councilman. And then, of course, I'll be on that panel, too. So we're going to want to maybe speak for about a half hour, then open it up to questions, because, like I said, it's basically an informational thing. So we're hoping that people will turn out and be, hopefully, get some good information on how it affects us.
Was anybody invited from the city? Or from the kind of Ignite?
They were, yeah. Roger was inviting just about everybody, and also Charlene in here is inviting.
No, I mean to participate on the panel.
Oh, no, we thought four people was enough for the panel.
Dan Gookin is on the city council.
Right, Dan Gookin is on the city council, but my question is ballots. You know, most of these folks, I presume, are opposed to the U R D. And I may be wrong here, but do you believe you have ballots?
You know, we thought about trying to get some from the other side, if you want to, I could phrase it that way, but we feel that the newspaper does a pretty good job of what we're doing.
I'm sorry, you'll take one at a time. All right, there is a gentleman that I can suggest to you, and I don't know where he stands on the whole issue, but I'll send you an email later. It turns out, he was part of the body that was advising the governor back in 1984 on the formation of U R Ds, so he might be able to provide some historical perspective. And I'll send you the information. I don't know if he's willing to come forward. He is now retired. He used to be a commercial appraiser.
It will be open, like I said, to questions from anybody and the fellow that wants to attend.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so now we'll go to our strict time limit of two minutes. Who else would like to speak?
Okay, well, I'm going to.
Name and address?
Yes, I'm Brent Grayson, I live in the county.
Oh, okay.
Brent Grayson, yes.
We spoke.
Thanks, yes, we did, and I spoke to all of you, and I want to say thank you for the advisory board. I am against the U R Ds, and I appreciate you guys taking this gentleman's suggestion and putting it to a vote and letting the county know, the people know, what it's costing us and what it means. And thank you for your good work.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with that. Anyone else? Please feel free, Brent.
Mr. Chairman, Brent Reagan, Coeur d'Alene, unincorporated. And it's true that the U R Ds don't have a direct impact on people's taxes if they live outside of the U R D, but money is fungible, and there is an indirect impact, because the money that would be used for growth gets diverted to the U R D. So because counties run on budgets and not taxes, the budget has to be satisfied, so money has to be applied for the growth through the budget, and that money has to come from somewhere, and it comes from the taxpayer. So to say that the U R Ds don't have a direct impact outside the county is correct. They have an indirect impact, and they most certainly do. That's easily proven. On the topic of the advisory vote, it is an advisory vote, so by definition, it is a political vote.
Okay.
Right? We are not making law, we are not, there's no direct effect. It is advisory to the politics of the situation. So when you're considering the language, I would encourage you to consider the politics of the language. The people that want the advisory vote are having their taxes impacted by city council members, and they don't live in the city. So they have no direct way to influence the city council. This is, by definition, taxation without representation. This tax is being applied by someone who I have no vote over, and as a result, people get angry. The editor of the press said that having the vote would be divisive. I think it's just the opposite. Unless you give people an opportunity to have their say, that angers them. And the more specific you could be in your language about that say, and the more people that you can encompass in that language, the less divisiveness there will be. It will calm people, it will let them know that they've had a say, and hopefully, it will put the fear in other politicians, should they elect to pass this. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Summer?
Summer Bush, now, Post Falls. I would just say, in the language, please try to not use percentages, because sometimes those can be fudged, to try to be more exact with the numbers, even if they're numbers that not everyone understands. I just think when you use, like, the, like with the misunderstanding with the 86% versus the 20, that stuff seems to be a little fudgable. You guys would be accused of being biased, so I would say stick to straight numbers in your advisory vote. If it's specific to, like, Post Falls, and it's this amount of money, use that effect on money. That would be your suggestion.
Anyone else? Feel free. This is your time. No? Okay. Leslie, Bill, comments?
No, I'll be happy to get this thing on the ballot and get it voted on.
So I'm just going to reiterate my original position. The reason why I would like to use Hospital Corridor as an example is because they are a taxing entity. They have imminent domain power. And so for them to go through a U R D process, I don't think is reasonable or proper. It just smacks transparency in the face, and I'm not saying whether I'm against the project or not against the project, I'm just saying that they had other means to do it. So I would be in favor of still using that language, and more specifically, mentioning the $46 million of property taxes that will go to Ignite.
Okay, well, for the record, and some of you might already know this, we did take a vote last week. We didn't have precise language, but the vote last week, and I stressed that it was unanimous, was to use generic language and not specifically call out a specific U R D. There was some discussion, there might have been some disagreement, but that was, for the record, unanimous vote. You can check the minutes, you can check the audio. Okay, but let's come back to that. We discussed three possible, three possible versions of the language. Are you still, let me ask you this, Leslie, are you still in favor of the third one?
What's the third one? Oh, mentioning.
Do you want to read it?
Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cootenay County, which effectively increases the actual property tax rate countywide? Project examples, East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West I suppose I'm, that would be fine.
We made a decision last week, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, let me go through a couple of things here, just to clarify. I don't know if it's going to clarify, but it's going to help. So what I did over the weekend is I looked at five different tax bills. The one was Steve Matheson's, and this is all public record. By the way, I'm not picking on you, because mine's going to come up, too, so I'm going to choose you and me, okay? And I want to give you just a picture, and then you can draw your own conclusions, okay? Steve Matheson's home in 2014 was assessed at $746,000. Now, understand, this is assessment, not necessarily market value. His market value is probably higher than that. Steve had a successful career, and it's to his credit. His taxes that year, and I'm just rounding this off, were 2,452 bucks. In 2019, his assessed valuation went to almost $950,000, but his tax actually dropped. So he, his taxes, his overall county component, not talking about the total tax, we don't affect that here, county component decreased by 90 bucks in six years, but he had a 27% increase in value. So not to pick on Treasurer Matheson, here's mine. By the way, we sold our home in November. We now live in our daughter's home, because she lives in Australia, she's the owner, so we're property, we're not property poor, I don't know what we are now, but anyway. So I'll choose mine. So in 2014, and this is a home we just sold November, a few months ago, my assessment was 262,000, we'll call it 263,000. My prop, my county component for my taxes was about $863. In 2019, my assessment was 300, almost 369,000. My taxes went up slightly to $918. So my tax increase, county component only, went up 55 bucks in six years. I had a 40% increase in value. So I was assessed at 368. By the way, we sold the property for 587,000, okay? So the point that I'm getting at, if there is a point, and I'll let you draw your own conclusions, is it's really, it's very difficult to determine precisely how much money is coming out. But however, in my case, now, I was in the city. I was not in a U R D district, but I was in a city. So my contribution basically was 76 bucks. So of the roughly, whatever it was that I was paying, $917 plus those other few taxing districts, I was paying approximately $76 to a U R D. Now, had I been in a U R D district, it would have, my contribution would have been higher, okay? It just so happened, I was in the city, but not in the specific district, okay? And that's pretty much the way it runs. Okay, so.
Can I just make a couple of comments? Those two examples that you just described is ignoring the other taxing authorities that are impacted as well, including the cities, including the city of Coeur d'Alene, because the same concept is happening inside the city itself, creating the U R D.
That's true.
So there's going to be a reallocation.
That's true.
From those out to the other city residents.
Right.
So my tax bill was closer to eight grand, and when you actually take the calculation of all the taxing authorities that are impacted, it's significantly more. That's just my.
Yeah, but when you, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Well, and the point with the Hospital Corridor, this is the biggest U R D to date?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay, so I think that has a lot to do with it, too, and district-wise as well, boundary-wise?
I don't think from an acre standpoint it is.
Okay.
Probably from a market value standpoint.
Market value, okay.
Yeah, and by the way, there are no more U R Ds anticipated in the city of Coeur d'Alene, at least not in the foreseeable future, and by that, I mean the next four or five years. Post Falls, different story. I think Spirit Lake is a different story, too, and I think Rathdrom, if I'm not mistaken. Go right ahead.
How you know that?
Basically, in conversations with the mayor, he said there's nothing anticipated over the next five years. And possibly beyond, I don't know.
They have a plan out there for the east.
Yes.
East Sherman, that U R D is mentioned as the possible contingent for paying for that.
Yeah, and that hasn't been firmed up yet, so it's still very much in the discussion stage, but that could be a possibility, right? In any case, I just wanted to bring that out, because, again, I just want to point out, you're right, there are other taxing districts, but not all taxing districts are subject to an extraction for the U R D. So let's move on to the ballot language. I'll tell you what, I'm willing to make you a trade, Leslie. I'll go with this.
Okay.
But there's one problem, and it's a problem with all three suggestions. Let me read it again. Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cootenay County, which effectively increases the actual property tax rate countywide?
Tax rate.
Tax rate, yeah, we got to be very careful with that. Let me be more specific. If you look at our budget for this year, our effect, our tax rate dropped from last year from $28 per 100,000 evaluation to 24. So that's a decrease in the rate. What I would rather see this say is, instead of saying effectively increases the actual property tax rate, that it increases a portion of your county taxes, or countywide taxes, because we can't assign a specific, we got to be very careful with that. So to say that it's increasing a portion of your taxes is probably more accurate. It's more general, but it's probably more appropriate. You okay with that?
Steve, how do you feel about that? Because I've kind of been running with.
This is a conversation the county commissioners was having. I've told you what I would like to see on the ballot, and I think at this point, it's up to you three, so.
Okay. Do you want, Summer has a?
Please, go right ahead.
I don't understand what you mean by rate or portion, so how would other people understand that on the ballot?
Well, we can't be any more specific than that. Okay, the problem is, if you talk rate, it's not necessarily the rate that's being affected. You're paying a portion of your overall tax to the U R D. That's all we can say at this point, and that's going to.
A portion's kind of understandable, but then it's still, for me, with both of them, a rate of what or a portion of what? A portion of a whole? A portion of a.
No, it's a portion of your, no, a portion of your county taxes. I'm keeping the rest of the wording the same, okay? I'm just saying.
No, I'm just trying to understand.
Right.
If I don't understand, other people want to understand.
At the risk of, I know that you guys voted last week, but the reason why I used a specific U R D is that it has actual numbers, definitive numbers that were calculated by the actual city itself and its urban renewal district. Everything in that ballot language that I have submitted came from their language.
That's fine.
It's definitive. I think once you move off of that specific U R D, we're going to run into issues like this, where it becomes hard to articulate, what are we voting on?
Okay, to that point, let me also say, and I think you're aware of this, there is a legal opinion that basically says that if we target a specific U R D, we're pretty much stepping outside the spirit of the law, of the statute, that allows us to put this on the ballot. And so that's what I'm also being guided by.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
And I appreciate that. You guys have to make that decision from a legal standpoint, having not seen the most updated legal opinion. All I can tell you is that is in contradiction to the chief elections officer in Cootenay County and the chief elections officer for the state of Idaho.
Okay, and I'm not convinced that they're in contradiction. We might be saying two different things. I think, I think my understanding, and I didn't speak with the gentleman directly, is that the broader question is, can we put the question of an advisory vote regarding U R Ds on the ballot? And his answer to that is yes. How specific we can get and whether we can target a specific U R D that was established by the city is a different question and a legal question. And I think that's where the opinion that we have says we're crossing the line.
Okay, follow-up question, just to continue.
Last one, and then we go forward. Go ahead.
Is that your rationale, the legal concern for not putting a specific information on the ballot?
That's only one of.
Okay.
Okay.
Clerk Brandon. I just, since I was mentioned here, I thought I'd weigh in. I did talk to Secretary Denny, and he was very clear that the specific language is not illegal in accordance with 31-718. He has written an opinion to that effect.
Okay, I have not seen that. Okay? And therefore, I'm going to go with the more general language. We're going to identify.
No, I'm not trying to tell you.
No, I.
I'm just weighing in on what Secretary Denny has told me.
But was Secretary Denny, was he addressing specifically the Hospital Corridor?
He said there's absolutely nothing illegal about the language that he had seen, which was the language that Stephen had presented.
Okay, fine. I still have to go with the people who are tasked with protecting not only the B O C C, but the taxpayers of the county. And again, I'm willing to concede to include the Health Corridor, and it's the third option that Commissioner Leslie Duncan has put forth. What I would like to do is change the language, at least, to remove actual property tax rate countywide to a portion of, a portion of a resident's taxes countywide.
A property tax.
Property tax, yeah. And so we're identifying at least several U R Ds here, East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathdrom. Okay? So do you want to restate it? Do you want to put it in the form of a motion?
Well, let's, let me just make sure that we got it. Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cootenay County, which effectively increases a portion of, you originally said of countywide taxes, but of.
Property taxes.
Property tax countywide.
Go ahead.
Okay, so effectively increases a portion of property taxes countywide.
Right.
And then project examples include East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathdrom.
There you go. And then the choice is yes or no.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Before we go to a motion.
Go right ahead, Bill.
Jump in. I think anything that results in taxation without representation, regardless of the amount, is wrong. That's why I don't like U R Ds at all, period, end of subject. I have never met one I like, I never will. I would like them done away with, but that's not something that we have any control over at the county level.
Right.
The language, my language, U R Ds, are you for them or against them? And you know, it would be about 98%, I think, against them, that people understand the least amount. But we have to put something on the ballot more articulate than that, so I understand the struggle.
Okay. So then, do you want to put it, Leslie, in the form of a motion? I'm sorry, Ruben, go right ahead.
Well, since we are now talking about specifically naming U R Ds, I have a concern. And the concern is, will there be any way, shape, or form that we can re-sake to the community, to the voters, that, and what an advisory vote is? I've been talking to people about this issue, and most of them don't know what an advisory vote is. They think, I'm concerned that the voter will think that their voting, no, and that they will go away. And that, as we all know, that's not the case. This will have no effect on the ultimate result.
Right.
So I'm concerned that we would be deceiving voters.
Clerk Brandon, is there, when you have an advisory vote, is there any language on the ballot that states that this is an advisory vote?
Yeah, it would be, the language must be approved by your board and then approved by the clerks. So I would assume that the clarity that this vote is only advisory would help alleviate some of Ruben's concerns. However, it needs to be not only clear that it is advisory, but I believe there needs to be some public education as well. to be some public education as well.
Yes, which I definitely intended to start that ball rolling and use our social media platform here as well as my own to do that, yeah.
And let me state with, I'll restate the statute here, it's very quick, it's very succinct. It's Idaho Code 31-718, and it reads, "The Board of County Commissioners shall have the authority to place a question on the ballot pertaining to any issue before the citizens of that county during a primary or general election," period. "The results of such an election shall be advisory only, non-binding." Okay, so.
So we could say per statute 31-718.
Absolutely.
But also, it says, "Do you support the use of?" So it's kind of, to me, it's really general, so I'm not sure, even if we said, "Do we support the use, do we not support the use?", are people gonna think U R Ds are going away if they vote no? You think so?
It's too general, more specific for people like me, because we don't quite understand. We need to be very clear.
I think we're gonna have to finalize it if we're gonna move forward, we need to do that today. I don't think you're gonna come up with a perfect, you know, perfect language. I think we have to take every opportunity to make sure people understand what it is and what it's not. So, I think you're okay using, "Do you support the use of urban renewal districts"? You think you're fine with that?
Okay. All right, well, we can make a motion, we can vote on it and move on, but if something else comes up, I mean, it's not subject to blood.
Well, I am not gonna revisit it. Okay, once we make this decision, we have to go forward. Clerk Brennan also has a deadline.
Absolutely.
Yes, I was just gonna point that out. The other thing, and I will assume that once this vote is taken today, it will go to Legal for review.
Yes.
If I could be involved in those meetings, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you. It'll save us from doing it twice.
Yeah, so I'm just not sure about using advisory vote language at this point, is that's why I'm concerned, because it was just that question on there, and, you know, as long as our education is such that, it's like, hey, this doesn't do away with advisory, or U R Ds, I mean, that's a state legislature.
Yeah, that's right, that's a whole different question.
All right, then, I move that the following ballot language be submitted for the May primary vote. Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cootney County which effectively increases a portion of property taxes countywide? Projects, examples, East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathrum.
And then yes or no?
Correct.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and let me add that this is for the May 19th, 2020, primary election. Aye. So the vote carries, we have language for the May 19th primary election, we have ballot language. Thank you, everyone. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
The rest of the voting is really boring.
There's one way. Okay, number one will take just a couple of seconds, but if you want to handle Jim first, it's...
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do Jim first.
Okay.
Okay, so we just, we just completed item three, and let's move on to item two. Well, Clerk Brennan is with us, and item number two, by the way, is Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Voting Machines Discussion. Clerk Brennan?
Well, thank you, Chairman Philios and board. We have received an updated quote, it sounds like everybody was working this weekend. I called Lori Moore Marks from ESMS, and she has given us a quote for 46 more, you know, express vote machines. I know, Chris, you voted with it, and so did I.
I did vote, very simple.
And we are, the AutoMark technology is very much behind the times and very difficult to operate, and they're about 85 pounds apiece, moving them. So this quote, and I will make an apology to Bill, I couldn't get it to you because I got it at 9:25 this morning, but it is the, what Lori is going to say. When I was talking to Secretary Denny about the language, I also asked him about the Help America Vote Act monies that will be coming to the county. Cootney County will be receiving about $87,000.
Okay.
Our match, which is 30%, can be done with partial in kind as well. But, $87,000 certainly does not meet what you see in front of you here. So with that, I will point out that we did ask for 70, we were given 10 as well as our third, 850. The voting public is very, very interested. It's a presidential year, and we are going through voter registration cards like I don't think I've ever seen. And I think that this is gonna help us throughout running this, as well as our county primary and the presidential general. So with that, I will be quiet. And one other thing, and we get reimbursement from the state for running elections. It averages around $300,000 per year, depending on the number of elections, of course. But, that money goes directly to the general fund. I can't believe I haven't figured out how to get it to come to Clerk's Division, but I haven't. It comes directly to the general fund. So with that, I'm done.
Okay.
So I would request these 46, which will make every polling place have, every polling location will have a new express vote.
And my understanding is, if you don't get these machines, that it will require much more personnel right now than you have scheduled.
Just getting them moved is an issue.
And when they were going through, I didn't make it out there, but when they were going through testing all the machines, which is required, my understanding is, it, some of them failed.
Yes, about 20.
Yeah, so, last year when we were looking at this, I mean, I knew how important this, this vote was, but we were trying to crunch numbers and, and only ended up giving them 10, not realizing how much the numbers would increase, not realizing how out of date that they had become. So I think, are we only the, we're the largest county that uses them?
Yes, we're the largest county that still uses them, and I think we're the largest county that still uses them US-wide, to be honest with you. One other county, Jefferson County, much smaller.
About 25,000 people.
Still uses them.
Yeah, yeah. So I am the least fan of mid-season changes to the budget and everything, but these are gonna last, what do we think, 10, 20 years at least?
What are we talking about for money again?
$68,000.
The quote is right here in front, and about 155, and again, we're going to be getting 87 from the Help America Vote Act from the Secretary of State, maybe this week, actually.
Yeah.
And we will have a 30% match, which can be in kind as well as money.
Right, and then you returned how much to the budget last year? Or how much to the...
About $800,000 from Clerk's Division.
Right, so, at this point, I would recommend, well, this is not an action item, so we need to bring it forth to next Tuesday's business item, if it's agreeable.
So basically, we're saying this was not forecasted?
Well, it actually was.
It was.
It was cut.
Go ahead.
It was cut.
It was reduced.
Yeah.
So they asked for 70, they asked for 70 express vote machines, and they were given 10.
And they were given 10.
And the reason we're only asking for 46 is we got the 10, and we have 56 polling locations and 70 precincts in those 56.
Understood.
Shared precincts.
So then, in FY '21, you'd be asking for 14 more machines?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, how many people, do we, do we have any idea how many people are using them? Versus voting manually?
Well...
You first introduced them.
We don't, but really, that's not the issue. The issue is the Americans with Disabilities Act.
They're mandated.
We need to not make voting hard for anyone, and you and I know how easy these were. The AutoMarks are absolutely awful to vote on. It's hard.
My father-in-law used to have to vote on those.
Have you ever seen, like, remember back in the day when the computers first came out and they were massive, and they looked like our modern-day 65-inch TVs? I mean, that's what we're talking about here, like, these things are massive, they take up a lot of space, 85 pounds, two people to work them, it's insane. And the AutoMark, you saw that whenever you were, or the express vote, you saw it when you were there the other day.
Right, right.
And when people find out it's an option, there's a line for the express votes, because they're so, they're fun, they're fun to use.
And you get a receipt of who you voted for.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill, you want to comment?
No.
Okay, so you want to bring it up to the business meeting next Tuesday?
Yes.
What can I do for me, Commissioner?
So probably a memo explaining the $87,000 grant.
Because the ADA component is key.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I suggested it be brought forward, because it's not, and we're looking at other issues too, with those 85-pound machines that...
The other thing on your quote, you will see, there's trade-in for the AutoMark.
Okay.
I hope they're not jacking up the price so they can give us 2,000 apiece, because to me, they're not worth five cents.
Don't tell them that, Jen. Okay, good enough. Are we okay then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Brennan. Okay, let's move on. Let's move back up to number one, jail expansion fund discussion. Leslie, is that for...
Yes, so, and sorry, Captain, for keeping you here for so long. We're trying to always improve our process and especially follow the law. And at this point, jail expansion's coming to a close, and we have the Compton Sewer Project that is kind of an unformed scene item, but we have time to make this switch in the budget. So what Auditor and I have been talking about is taking $100,000 from the jail expansion fund, putting it into the Compton Sewer Project Fund, which all of our bids, I think, came in under $60,000. So the $100,000 should be enough to, to cover that. And then when the final bills come in for jail expansion, we'll go ahead and close that, the remainder goes to general fund, and then we can...
Which is exactly the way to do it, to stay consistent with statute.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's where we want to make sure that it's not just a pool of money that we pull from, that it stays true to its name.
Okay.
So that will come before us tomorrow at the Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah, this resolution, 2020-21, will come before you, just spelling out that $100,000 will move from...
Understood.
From one fund to another.
Okay. Are we done? Okay, fine, item number four, establish official name for 627 North Government Way, potential action. Leslie?
So there's been, and actually, Leanne's not here. Oh, you are, I'm sorry. That's right, you moved. You had received a question from a citizen regarding the name of what we call the Romer Building, and you were here during the purchase.
I negotiated the purchase.
Right, and so it's been Romer from the beginning, with the public asking about why it got its name changed. I'm concerned about changing the name now, because if somebody wanted to do research on it, all of the stuff from Coeur d'Alene Press says Romer Building.
Okay.
Or Romer House, and so, I just wanted to have it as a discussion, is every, are we fine with that, are we keeping it Romer House? I know that the music conservatory calls it the Hamilton House. Yeah.
What I'm showing, what I'm showing, Leslie, is a card that somebody had made up that talks about the historic Hamilton House, whatever, okay? Bill, thoughts?
It's the Romer Building, as far as I'm concerned, and that's the way people will go find it easiest, and that's what I want, is people go look it up in the Coeur d'Alene Press or be talking about the same thing. If you start switching names, especially at this point, there's gonna, it's gonna generate confusion. We don't need any more confusion around here.
Okay.
Agreed.
You okay with that?
It's an action item, so I think staff would like us to make a formal motion, just so we can refer back. So I move that we establish the official name for 627 North Government Way as the Romer House.
So you're seconding it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion's carried? Okay, final item, if we can get through this in 15 minutes. Pending items per our status review list?
If I may.
Go right ahead.
There's nothing that is different on my check items, nothing at all, except, I haven't heard any more on the bodies, I mean, there's just, there's nothing new, and I think that's a very important, if there's something new, let's discuss it.
Okay, so why don't we address those items that we believe have a change? How, you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, okay, so Bill, you said you don't have any?
I really don't have any.
Oh, okay, Leslie?
I think we're all up to speed on 409 passing the House, it's now in the Senate Committee, so hopefully it comes out with some language that taxing districts can live with.
Can you, for everybody's benefit?
Oh, 409 is where the House wants to keep all taxing entities in the state to a 0% property tax increase, and with our new growth, that's nearly impossible to do, so that's quite concerning. And so hopefully, the Senate will come up with some better proposed language for that. So, let's see, anything else online? The only other thing would be...
I'm sorry, Dana, go ahead.
I just wanted to add with 409 too, just, just for the sake of the group, that 409 does not hold schools or U R Ds at all.
Correct, thank you for that, yes. So two of the bigger property tax uses.
So the biggest drivers of property tax will not be held to zero if this happens.
The biggest compliance.
Have been exempted from 409.
Um, highway districts? Were they exempted as well?
No.
No, they weren't, okay.
Only schools and U R Ds.
Okay.
So the other things, I attended the Hayden, City of Hayden, Chamber of Commerce State of the City address, and it was, it was pretty fascinating that for the last 10 years, they've had the same number of employees, 36 full-time employees, and their population has doubled to 16,000. The other notable thing is they've reduced their codes by 500, they were able to do away with 500 of their codes, so.
Okay.
But yeah, otherwise, I mean, they're, they'll definitely be hurt by, by 409 as well as the county, so. That's all for me.
Okay, so I guess I'll go last, first page, last item, State of the County Press. Bill, you and I have to come up with topics by the end of this week? Oh, by Wednesday. Three, four. Action items, okay. Let's see, pending legislation, Leslie, you covered that. Spokane River Wake concerns, all three of us are tasked. We do have a meeting this week with Legal, which hopefully will come up with the draft language that will result in a resolution, but of course, that's gonna have to go to a public hearing, and so we'll see what happens with that. Let's see. Real Estate Market Forum, last page. I've attended this for a number of years, it is a, basically a collection of the Coeur d'Alene Association of Realtors, excuse me, various associations of Realtors, specifically Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, and Bonner, and it's given every year, and it goes through essentially the entire real estate market in the inland, virtually the inland northwest. And you're looking at a combined population of about 750,000. It's actually quite fascinating. So, we, and from 2008 to 18, Cootney County added 17,000 people, you can do the math on that, Bonner County by comparison, 3,900. We're going at the rate of about 2.5%, they're going at the rate of about 1%. Median household price, Cootney County, countywide about 320, Spokane County, this is very important, 260. Now watch this, if we lose deputies, you hear the argument that it costs more to go there? No.
Not anymore.
The wages are higher and the house prices are lower, so we need to compete. Anyway, that's one of, one of the takeaways. Essentially, they... Essentially, they talked about their U R Ds. They call them P D As. And several people spoke to that, and they use basically public-private partnerships. The difference is, they don't have as large an increment going into their, I'm going to call them U R Ds, as we do. They top out at about seventy-five percent. So, it's very different. And they build their U R Ds around the question of economic growth and the three Rs, which is road, railway, and runway. Okay? And that's the way they build that. There's probably more data that's come out of it. Again, a major concern, single fastest-growing component of transplants to Cootney counties over the age of sixty-five. And to a broader picture, over the age of sixty. And so, we're doing some things here as a board to try and encourage economic growth among a younger demographic and, and appeal to them as well. So, that's basically, that's a highlight. The average income of transplants over the age of sixty, by the way, is not coming from wages, as you might expect. You have public pensions, you have dividends, and they're running slightly over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, what's happening is, to no surprise, they're moving in, they're boosting the values. One-third of the market, by the way, the local market, is cash, and it has been for some time. And in fact, within the real estate community, realtors are telling their people, I don't know that I like this or agree with it, but some of them are telling the people, don't accept any offers contingent on financing, wait for the cash offer. End result, values go up. What goes up with it? Taxes. It's not the tax increase from the county. It's the increase in the values that are coming in from the, all the values being boosted by higher incomes coming into the region. That's the bottom line. Anyway, so much for that. Okay, once again, I'm done.
Did you want to talk about that?
Oh, EMS, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we had, I had a meeting last week with the Joint Powers Board. Well, we had executive session too. I can't comment on that. Everything, well, actually, revenues are up. And when we talk EMS, we talk two basic, two basic levels of service that are, that are offered. It's ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, and Basic Life Support. And one of the problems that we encountered in the past year, let's call it fiscal twenty, is people would call in, the E M Ts would go out, "I'm fine." "You're fine?" But meanwhile, this is costing money. So, somehow, that's, that's being addressed. And so, thus far this year, the revenue stream is up. The smartest thing that that organization ever did was to distribute the ambulances into the firehouses. Prior to doing that, the whole system was in trouble. But now, it works quite efficiently. And it's a, it's a, it's a good system, and it serves us well. Pretty much, that's it. Nothing else to report other than that. Revenue's up. That's it for me.
Okay.
Public comment again. Eleven fifty-three, meeting adjourned. Thank you.